Hello. And welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, March 13th. My name is Chris Dodson, and with us today is Caleb Wasaki, our sign language interpreter. Due to the length of today's agenda, please go to the Legislative Information Center via the City Council website to read the bills that are up for preliminary vote. You can find the link in the business dropdown on the city's PittsburghPA.gov website. Click Legislative Information Center. From there, click the red launch button. This will take you to the council meeting calendar. Find the meeting for today's date and click on Agenda. The meeting agenda should open with all the bills for discussion today. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Standing Committee Meeting of Wednesday, March 13th, 2019. Our first order of business is public comment. Members of the public who want to address the council will please come forward. You'll be given three minutes. The green light means the beginning of three minutes. The yellow light means one minute to summarize. The red light means that your time has expired, so please relinquish the podium. However, I would like to take this time to remind everyone that the rules of council state that common is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted, and order will be maintained at all times. First speaker, please.
Thanks, Councilman. Good morning. My name is Rob Honroy. I'm a city of Pittsburgh resident, North Side, and I am Director of Organizing for Ceasefire PA. And I'm here to stand once again in support of council's proposed actions to regulate firearms in the city of Pittsburgh. To wit, in order to do that, I'd like to provide some statistics for your public record. Per population, the city of Pittsburgh led the state in assaults by firearms from 2013 to 2016 at a rate of 17.5 people per 100,000 in 2016. We're a consistent second in robberies and assaults with firearms every year from 2007 to 2016, just behind Philadelphia. In 2017, there were 57 homicides in the city of Pittsburgh, which is the same as 2016. In the outlying communities in Allegheny County, there were another 50, and that's 2% more than in 2016. Eighty-nine percent of these homicides were caused by gunshot wounds. Twelve percent of these homicides occurred in one zip code of Allegheny County's 130 neighborhoods. That's 1-5-2-0-6. East Liberty, East End, Lincoln Laramo, and Highland Park. Despite the fact that only 13% of Allegheny County residents are black, 83% of total county homicide victims were black. Something I just learned whenever I was doing this research, we are currently, we the city of Pittsburgh, are currently number 15 on CBS News's list of deadliest U.S. cities. According to that statistic, our murder rate is 18.4 per 100,000 people. As of March 12th yesterday, there have been four homicides already in the city of Pittsburgh this year, and there have been four others outside of Pittsburgh. In 2018, there were 96 gun homicides in Allegheny County, and the city of Pittsburgh had 50 homicides, including the 11 Tree of Life victims. This is all too much, and it has to stop. And while legislation is not a magic solution to everything, it is an important first step, and I applaud council for doing what they're doing. I also recommend that they continue to fund intervention programs, the Group Violence Initiative, and support public safety efforts throughout the city. But thank you for your time. I have this document that I can submit to your record.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Stanley Levine. I represent the homeowners at 118A Woodland Road, which property has been nominated for designation as an historic structure. There are two separate and compelling reasons why the house should not be designated by council as an historic structure. The first is that it requires two separate acts of trespass in order for any Pittsburgh resident or any tourist to see the home. The house is on Woodland Road. Woodland Road is a private road. It is maintained by the Woodland Road Association. The city of Pittsburgh does not pay for its maintenance. And the Woodland Road Association has voiced its displeasure and opposition to the designation of the house as an historic structure for many reasons, not the least of which is the safety and security of the people who walk that road, including many, many students at Chatham University. The second, and I should add that Woodland Road is marked at various points along the roadway as a no trespassing zone very prominently, and I guess they enforce it with some degree of rigidity, but not a lot because of Chatham University. Secondly, the Snyder's whom I represent own the property that sits directly in front of the house designated for historic designation. That is the 118A. That house fronts on Woodland Road, and in order to see the house that's been nominated for designation, one would have to walk down the driveway of the Snyder House, which they own at 118 and which they're refurbishing, in order to see that home. So it would involve somebody actually walking down your driveway to see a property that's been designated. And what I'm suggesting is that it really invites people to trespass, not only over Woodland Road, but over Snyder's driveway in order to see the property. And I don't know about the legality of that. That's not really the issue I'm facing with here, notwithstanding the fact I'm a lawyer. It's just not right. It doesn't make sense. And I would suggest to council that over the past four decades, there have been 13 homes that have been designated under the existing code and the predecessor code for historic designation. All of those homes are visible from a public way or a public street, and all of them are more than 100 years old. Finally, I would suggest the second compelling reason the house should not be designated. It's in very poor condition. And the best evidence that I can offer to that is testimony of somebody that refurbishes houses, a fellow by the name of Joe Censher, who testified at the Historic Review Commission as follows. "I walked and went through the entire Abrams house after Ms. Abrams' death. The house is in extremely poor condition. The duck work underneath the house is built on top of a pond. It's filled with moisture. The drywall is un-mold. The exterior of the house is completely shot, moldy. It's infested with ants. The roof has been leaking for years. I cannot fix the house."
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good morning. My name is H.P. Jackson. We was just listening to Rob, and it's about a humanity situation. You know, we need to go ahead and patch up our young people's lives and what's going on in this city, and adults also. You know, the gun violence is very treacherous, and everybody's been talking about this for years, you know, and we need to go ahead and do something about it. You know, I lost my oldest grandson with four bullets in his head up in Penn Hills. And then my grandson's classmate, okay, lived on Sesskhahanna Street, got killed, okay? And both of them go to Alder days. And then you had to experience what happened in Squirrel Hill, all right? It all connected together. So reality is reality, all right? So where does the humanity resources come from, right? We gotta go ahead and seek the truth here. You know, what is the truth? That we have to go ahead and control the situation here? You know, you got to know what to do with a gun, all right? And I'm a witness of that, all right? Because I done lived it years ago, all right? Representing my country. But where does the humanity stand? You know, there's no spiritual format, and you already know that's an issue too. So who's going to help solve the problem? Who's going to go ahead and participate instead of doing the talk? You have opportunity today to go ahead and transform lives here, you know? You know, the mayor's been making the stand. I mean, you've got public officials here making the stand, and then they even going in schools talking about violence, all right? You can't go to a child and say, like, you better not do, on the way that we were brought up, all right? We were secure, basically. We had our parents there. We had both parents here to go ahead and interact in our lives and give us a direction. There's so much corruption. The subliminal music. I even see young white folks even calling, "What's up, my nigga?" Come on. Look what's done happened to our country today. Huh? Did you ever dream that our young people was going to walk around, even, what, 40 years old, with their pants off their butt? Huh? I mean, we were brought up with character. All right, I'm blessed. I'm going to be 66 pretty soon, all right? But the reality is the reality. Where is the humanity resources to go ahead and stop this violence? All right, somebody gotta make a move, you know? Somebody gotta make a step, and I hope that you can. And I really hope you make your vote count. You know, I don't care what they doing about that crazy and protesting about having guns, all right? We're not animals. We are human beings. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Dr. Allison Solba. I am a pediatrician and violence prevention researcher at UPMC Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh and a Pittsburgh resident. I am here today in strong support of the proposed legislation to ban assault weapons and high-capacity ammunition from our city, and to enact an extreme-risk-protection order ordinance to safeguard our children and our communities. As a physician, I have seen firsthand the impact of firearms on our community. Firearms have taken the lives of far too many of my patients. I have borne witness to the pain of families as they learn of the death of their sons and daughters. As we so painfully experience with the Tree of Life shooting, the path of the bullet does not stop with those whose lives have ended too soon. The path of the bullet rips apart communities. Leading medical organizations, including the American College of Physicians, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the American Psychiatric Association specifically support legislation to ban assault weapons and high-capacity magazines, and to enact extreme-risk-protection order laws. Firearm violence is a public health issue, and together we can prevent it. As a violence prevention researcher, I am well-versed in the rigorous scientific research supporting firearm legislation. In the past five years alone, multiple studies conducted by leading researchers at esteemed institutions and published in the top medical and public health journals demonstrate that firearm legislation can save lives. Evidence from 130 studies in 10 countries suggests that the simultaneous implementation of laws targeting multiple firearm restrictions is associated with reductions in firearm deaths. A recent study conducted by researchers at Harvard University demonstrated that stronger gun policies were associated with decreased rates of firearm homicide. There is also strong evidence linking increased firearm access to higher rates of suicide. Multiple rigorous studies show that counseling suicidal patients and families to temporarily limit access to firearms significantly reduces the likelihood of completed suicide. Right now, we have high-quality data to help guide firearm legislation and save lives. Many people think that the best way to prevent gun violence is to identify those at high risk of perpetrating violence and to use graphic educational experiences to teach them about incarceration and firearm injury. Results from seven randomized controlled trials indicate that not only do these scared-straight programs fail to deter crime, they may actually lead to more offending behavior. In 2018, there were more than 300 mass shootings in the U.S. Eighteen of those took place in Pennsylvania. The most lethal involved assault weapons. Children and families deserve to feel safe where they live, work, go to school, worship, and play. As a pediatrician and violence prevention researcher dedicated to the health and safety of our children, I urge you to pass the proposed ordinances banning assault weapons and large-capacity ammunition in the city. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Ellen Mazo, and I'm here at UPMC Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh on behalf of Dr. Deborah Moss, who was unable to make it this morning. I think it's important for me to speak on her behalf because she's coming at this issue from a health and safety perspective. Dr. Moss has been a pediatrician at UPMC Children's for 20 years, practicing for 20 years. And just as significantly, this year, she is president of the Pennsylvania American Academy of Pediatrics. So she represents 2,300 pediatricians across the state when she speaks on behalf of the support of the city's proposed ordinance to ban assault weapons in our city and allow courts to remove guns from those deemed at risk by police or family members. Again, it's the public health issue. She sometimes, often is asked why she gets involved in this issue of gun violence. And she's asked, "Isn't it a political issue?" But she returns a response by saying, "I ask you, if it's not a health issue, why are people dying from it? And if it's not simply a health issue, then what are we doing?" Firearm violence is a public health issue. It is a public health issue because firearm violence is responsible for injuring and killing our children and the adults who care for them at alarming rates, and because firearm violence is preventable through a variety of interventions, including legislation and public policy. All children deserve to feel and be safe where they live, learn, and play. The proposed city ordinance is one way to protect citizens, especially our most vulnerable. Assault weapons are weapons of mass destruction designed to kill or injure as many victims as possible at one time. Their only purpose is to inflict mass casualties. We do not need assault weapons outside the military to protect our citizens. That is why Dr. Moss urges you to pass the proposed ordinance banning assault weapons in the city. Again, as president of the Pennsylvania chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, who represent, remember this, 2,300 pediatricians across the state and the children they serve, she's asking you to support this ban. Firearm violence is a critical health and safety issue demanding evidence-based action now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Don Cortland. I'm the general counsel of Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation, and I was the applicant in the Abrams Ventuary Historic Status Petition. Simply want to make two points. Regarding the private nature of the right-of-way Woodland Road and the difficulty of access, everything that Mrs. Snyder's counsel referred to, I think, is accurate. The observation I would make is that for many years, Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation had a wonderful relationship with the owner of the house, and through that owner's invitation to others to view the house and enjoy it, we entertained people from not only the region, but from other countries. And it was a really esteemed opportunity for people to come see. And so I would simply say that even though a property may be held privately, and it may go through periods when the owners do not invite people to come see it, forever is a long time. And once we tear down a house and it ceases to exist, nobody has the opportunity of sharing it with their neighbors or people from other countries. Regarding the condition of the house, I would simply point out that it's really a question of money. The house was occupied by Mrs. Abrams until her death, and certainly there is deferred maintenance. None of us have gone through and done a detailed analysis of what it would take to put the house back into apple pie order. However, Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation has restored homes that are in much worse condition than this home. We are currently working on two properties in Manchester in which we've had to disassemble brick walls, clean the bricks, and relay them as part of the restoration process. And the very charming Market at Fifth development that Pittsburgh History and Landmarks did down on Market Street years ago started with the roof in the basement of the building. So, you know, the question is, if there's a will, there's a way, and it's a matter of price. So we appreciate council's deliberation over this challenging issue, and we continue to support the historic status. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, my friend. I'm sorry I didn't recognize you. It's good to see you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. And first, it was the first speaker spoke about gun violence. And I wanted to thank the mayor, because I had been coming down here for years telling him that up in Norview Heights, it was the same ones that was doing the killing. The same ones, when the one fellow that lived up there, and he came, he said, "Ms. Brown, it's the same ones doing the killing," because the police would not actually come and see about it. You know, I told you, they would come two or three days later, and I had said, "We need a police presence right then." Soon as it happened, two days straight in a row, they're to stay there, they're to stay there, they're to talk to the people. And I'll come back two weeks later, because you come back two weeks later. Anything that was said, those people might end up dead. But if you have them all, you understand, the whole community talking at once, who can they blame? But it's a lot of times I come down and I have asked, I asked the mayor, and he finally did, and I thanked him. I did, I did see him and thanked him, even though I told him that the other people were talking about him like a dog, and I was too, because some of the things that he's doing. Now, I have a problem when I speak here at City Council with President Kraus. President Kraus takes, and he has ad hoc meetings, you know, just change, and you don't know what's happening. I'll use this as an example. It says, "In order of, the order of business for all stated meetings of council shall be as follows. Number one, you presentations, petitions, proclamations. Then you got public comment. But you remember when Ms. Gross, well, she's always late, didn't come? You put the people first. When I came here, Dr. Miller said he already had public speaking. But I sat all the way through the whole meeting, and you didn't let me speak. You have set up a pattern of discrimination. You set up a pattern hostility towards me. You set up a pattern that the white people can speak three minutes and they're only supposed to speak once. You set up a pattern, you answered her, but you threw me out the meeting. I am tired of it, and I am going further. I've got to take it legal. But when I take it legal, I'm ask the court that a lawyer be in here, because you don't know the rules, and you won't learn the rules, and the ones that do will not speak up. Even you, Ms. Harris, you know some of the things that he's doing is wrong, and you should, why can't you call point of order? If we can't do that, then a lawyer must be here every time we have a meeting. If you can't take me, then you let the pro tem be over the meeting. If you have to show the hate, because the white, my friends, they were watching, they said, "Ooh, look how you let Claudia, Claudia speak about her trees." And when I spoke about you, you...
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. See no other speakers? We ask the clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Cargill. Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
President Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you very much. Now, members, we have a very long meeting today, and we have a number of people who have to leave early. So I am going to skip a little bit around. I'll keep you posted, but please try to follow me. All right, the first thing we're going to do is on page seven of your agenda, we're going to the Public Works Committee, of which Teresa Kail Smith is the chair, and we're going to go straight to, it is actually a new paper, Bill Number 20191459, on page seven in your agenda.
Bill 1459, Ordinance Amendment and Supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title VII, six, I'm sorry, Conduct Article One, Regulated Actions and Rights. By repealing the existing language of Chapter 619, refuse collection and recycling in its entirety and replacing it with a new Chapter 619, Municipal Waste and Recycling, to streamline municipal waste and recycling practices in the city.
I need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Need a second.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Can we have the folks for this bill come to the table, please? Good morning. Welcome. Good morning. Could you introduce yourself for the public, and then I'm going to defer to Councilwoman Strasburger, because this is her bill. So just introduce yourself first for the public.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Sean Wagle, Program Supervisor with Environmental Services.
Teresa Bradley, sorry, Recycling Supervisor, Environmental Services.
Lorraine Mackler, Law Department.
So thank you all for being here. I'm going to defer to Councilwoman, because this is her bill. Take it from there, and then I have questions when you're done.
If Strasburger then fall by Ms. Smith back.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you all for being here today. This bill is really a cleanup of the Waste and Recycling Bill. So it is taking a lot of information that previously was practiced by Environmental Services or existed in the previous or the current Waste Code and puts it into law. I'm going to go through a couple of different things that it does. So we now, with this bill, we will have more consistency in our regulations and in the code. It updates the language to, like I said, reflect current practices. It clarifies what kind of service the city provides versus private haulers versus, you know, what the city will, you know, where the city will collect from. And I think another important thing to note is that it utilizes the plain language resolution for ease of accessibility. Plain language resolution passed several years ago, you know, should make it clear to anyone with an eighth-grade reading level what the law says, and we wanted to make sure that that was the case with this code as well. It incorporates storage and set-out requirements into the code from the waste regulations. So that's important because, you know, I think, like me, most of you, council members, probably get calls from neighbors complaining about, you know, people who are chronically either putting their garbage out too soon or leaving the bins out days and days after a collection has taken place. And in the past, there just wasn't a place in the code for environmental services enforcement to point to or for our offices to point to and say, "This is exactly what you need to be doing." And now there will be. So I think that's an important distinction to make. And there's some other kind of cleanup items in the bill as well. So what I see this as is a foundation upon which we can then layer other initiatives, like, you know, providing recycling blue bins to more residents across the city, composting, which I know Councilwoman Gross is a big champion of in her district and citywide, other kind of incentives and initiatives, both carrots and sticks, to be able to cut down on the amount of waste that people are actually leaving out each week and increase the amount that they're recycling or just using less in general. So this is the first step, I think, to many, many other future steps. I know that this is also an issue that is multifaceted, and there's a lot to discuss, but, you know, hopefully we can, we can keep the conversation moving and keep it on topic here, because I know it's an issue that can, you know, has a potential for going on a lot of tangents, but hopefully we can keep it here today. I do also want to mention that, I don't know what the protocol is, but I have a couple of voice amendments that I'd like to propose before we...
You can do it.
Okay. So section, and I'll just also point out, in front of you, in your green packet, you have a set of different pieces of information. One is on the yellow, the actual text file of the bill. You won't see markups because it's an entire replacement of previous language, and you wouldn't actually be able to read it, I think, if it was marked up. So it's almost a brand-new piece of code. On the blue sheet is the previous regulations, and then on, and then what you, what Environmental Services mails out to households across the city in addition. So on the amendments, if you are looking at Section 16.04, Municipal Waste and Recyclables Collection, 2A, change to blue containers clearly marked for recycling, not exceeding 35 gallons.
There's second.
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment, send it forward by saying aye.
And then I have a second one.
Second one.
Addition of C to that same section, 2C, addition of blue bags. Addition of C to that same section, 2C, addition of blue bags.
Right.
Second.
All in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, and you will get with the clerk to make sure that she gets the amendment as you have said it, okay? After the meeting.
Yes, I'm sorry, there is, there is one more.
Third amendment.
Third one, Section B of that same 619.04, timing, change in the, the last line there, seven to 10:00 P.M.
Councilwoman, I don't see this.
619.04B, timing.
Oh, I see.
It says 7:00 P.M., change that to 10:00 P.M.
There's a second.
A second.
All those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, it has been amended three times. You will get with the clerk to make sure that she has recorded them exactly as you intended. Any, now, are you, are you, you have other comments?
I have no other comments.
All right, we'll go back to Ms. Smith, who deferred to you. Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Reverend, and I'm going to thank you, Councilwoman, because you have been, you know, really engaging in this, and talking with Councilwoman Gross and I, and I don't know about the other members, but I want to thank you for making sure that we were included, because, as you know, Councilwoman Gross has been really interested in the composting piece, and just in general, this is under my committee, but I want to thank you for your work on this, and your staff, they've done a lot of great work on this. The only, I have a couple of concerns, I want to know, Law Department, is any legal concerns? And I think there was one section in particular, I can't remember what it was, to be honest with you, that I had a concern with, but overall.
Councilwoman, I've been involved in this rewrite, almost from the outset.
Well, to be honest with you, the Law Department's been involved in a lot of things that we're getting sued over, so I just want to know publicly what your stance is.
I understand. We're very comfortable with this, and as I told you, I've been involved from the outset. All of my recommendations were taken. There really weren't too many significant legal concerns at all. In fact, I was very, very pleased to see plain language adopted, because it's an important part of due process in this country, that everyone know what behavior is expected. And we've dramatically increased the readability and understandability by the public. So everyone should understand now, again, if they have a basic education and they can read what's expected, what times things have to go out, how it's prepared, and we feel.
Just to be clear, there's a lot of people that don't have a basic education, that will be following this, and there's also a lot of senior citizens. And so I want to make sure that it, you know, and I appreciate the clarity and the language for the general, for the most of the general public, but.
Absolutely.
So I just want to make sure that, that you don't have any legal concerns. And I'll actually send you an email about what my concern was, I just have to think about it.
Oh, okay, certainly, I'd be happy to respond.
Ask Councilwoman Gross to remind me.
I do want to address, I know that a large part of this is a public education campaign, and the public education campaign will take into account the full array of people that make up our wonderful city.
Yeah, and then the part I have concern with are the blue bags. I mean, obviously, we don't want those, but people to use those, but I did get a lot of phone calls from senior citizens. The last time we did something around recycling, and they were just concerned that they weren't going to be able to use their blue bags.
Well.
And because they can't manage the, the blue bins and some other things. So I, in general, I think this is mostly a question for you.
Yeah, I think it's a good question.
I think we need to know how we're going to address this with senior citizens, and people who, who don't have the ability to carry or move the bins. And, I mean, how are we going to educate people in this?
Well, certainly, that, that led to one of the amendments, that we were going to put that back in. We were looking for some viable alternatives. We have a number of things we're going to look into that would specifically be able, for everyone to be able to recycle. So we, we wanted to make sure we left that in.
But there are times that if people have difficulty, that the, during pickup, they'll go in and help, maybe onto the property, or like they used to in the backyard, go pick it up.
Yes.
But they still make those arrangements if people are having.
Yeah, well, we do have a provision for medical exemptions, and we were able to clarify that further in the update to the code.
Okay, I just want to make sure that people know that if you're having difficulty, feeling any kind of anxiety about this, there will be provisions in place. Okay, that's it for me, I think, for right now, but I may come back, but I may abstain till I read all these amendments, and then pause it next week.
Thank you. Very much, President Kraus.
Thank you. Councilwoman, congratulations, thank you very much. I am happy to support. I have one quick question for you, please. Under the definition, Section 619, it's on page five of the legislation, GG Waste and Recycling Fact Sheet. That's the incorporation of the piece that I wrote any number of years ago, that requires a landlord to review the tenant's responsibility to manage waste? Is that where that remains?
So, yeah, in addition to waste regulations that will be provided by Environmental Services, a fact sheet will, it's my understanding, and I'll allow Environmental Services to elaborate, but it's my understanding that a Waste and Recycling Fact Sheet will be distributed to each and every household. And then it is required here that landlords, landlords do inform their tenants of their rights and responsibilities. Something that's new in this bill is that not only the landlords, the property owners, but the tenants could potentially be cited for, after, you know, if they are notified by their landlord, and it's clearly stated that both landlords and tenants will be responsible under this code for following the law.
If that is indeed the case, I like that. So just to sort of refresh your memory, honestly, I can't remember when I wrote this, but it was probably a good 10 years ago, but we require every lease that's written in the city, the landlord has a responsibility to review waste management practices with their tenant when they sign the lease. They must initial it, sign that it has to live with the lease, and then if for some reason we find that waste is not being managed properly, we can go to that landlord, we can cite the landlord. And so I just want to make certain that that all remains, which I believe this makes it all remain. And, and then, if I understand the Councilwoman correctly, it would also then hold the tenant liable, if the tenant is not managing the waste, not just the landlord. I'm good, thanks, Councilman, this is great work, thank you very much, I'm happy to support.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Gross.
Does it matter what the lease is?
Also, I want to say, I was happy that we met several times in the drafting of the amendment, so thank you to Councilwoman Strasburger and her staff for kind of having everything so well organized, so we're able to talk through the sections that will allow us to kind of expand our options with composting, and see how we can reduce the waste stream, because we know that it costs us money, and it does, we can save money on how much waste we're hauling off to our landfills, and create more good that we need to amend soils. I mentioned earlier, I'll just keep it brief, last fall, there was actual, an entire conference on, a two-day conference on soils at FIPS that I attended. And really, our poor urban soils allow much more stormwater runoff and flooding than we would like, and the way to fix that is to amend it with composting. And similarly, you know, this rudimentary understanding, there were some scientists in the room here, but also with the contaminated soil that we had, also the way to reduce that contamination and make them healthier soils is by amending it with things like compost. So I think there's a lot of upside here. We save money on the, really, every year, the, the big budget that we spend on hauling waste, we don't need to be hauling off to landfills, and diverting it into more productive use. So there's capacity now, that's easy to see where we can pursue those issues. So I look forward to further discussions and further capacities added in the code, and in, and in the departments to help us.
Thank you very much. Any other conversations? See no other conversation, Ms. Harris?
Yes. Actually, we started working on this piece, and then the Councilwoman, so I would like to be on this legislation with you. I've had a number of problems in my district, because of the way that, the way it is written, it didn't say that after your garbage is picked up, that you have to put the container in the back or your basement. And some, it appeared that they were getting fined, and others could leave it out for five days at a time. So I think this is crystal clear to everyone now, that you cannot leave your garbage cans or the garbage out only the day before at 10:00 P.M., until it's picked up. And I think that will go away, because we can't treat people unfairly. So it has to be all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other conversations? See no conversation, all those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Madam Clerk, can I join too, please? Can I join?
No, not at.
Positive recommendation. Now, I'm going to move to page six, under Public Safety Services. There are two bills I'm going to read. I will start with Bill 1443, page six, under Public Safety Services.
Bill 1443, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Safety to Enter on Behalf of the City into an amended professional services agreement with Freedom and Need LLC, Reverend Cornell Jones, for continued professional services as a multi-strategy coordinator. These services are in regard to the National Initiative for Building Community Trust and Justice, and the city's grant agreement with the Department of Justice, Office of Justice Program, Office of Juvenile Justice, and Delinquency Prevention, as previously authorized by Resolution Number 398. Said amended agreement shall be extended for a period of three months, bringing the overall value of the amended agreement to $135,000, with the previous $120,000 funded from said grant, while the city issues a new RFP for the same services later in 2019.
Lavelle, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second, Mr. Lavelle.
This is simply to extend the contract for three months. As members should be aware, we are expanding the role of group violence intervention. We've added additional resources to it, and so a new RFP will be going out, but we don't want to see a lapse in service until that RFP goes out, so this extends the contract for that period of time.
Very much. Any other conversation?
I have a conversation.
Ms. Smith.
So before I vote for something like this, as a matter of fact, before I start questioning this program, I have been told numerous times that they would expand into our area, and then I was told that we would be included, I'd be included in those conversations. So far, this department has done nothing to communicate with me in terms of this program. This Public Safety Department has not, they have gone into my community, have gone to events, scheduled things with people without talking to me, or hiring people and interviewing people without talking to us, without talking to my community. So if this is supposed to be about community, then it should be, they should be having conversations with myself and with other people in our community that are involved in our area, not being told who's, who our leaders are in our area by, by other politicians, but they should be talking to us, the people that actually represent the area. So I'm getting a little bit ticked off at this program, getting a little bit ticked off at the Public Safety Department, and some of the things that they're doing. I had a conversation with Council, with Chief of Staff Gilman yesterday, and Cornell Jones, and I will just say that from now on, just as all of you want respected in your neighborhoods, I want the same in my neighborhoods, and I want my, the people that are working really hard in our area to be respected, and not just some political people making decisions for our area. So I'm going to vote abstain today, until I have those conversations, and then if this comes up again, I'm going to do everything I can to, to really address these concerns, and you and I will have a conversation after this meeting. Thank you.
All right, there's a motion to approve on the table. Any other conversation? Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I would actually, this is over the hearing, is that what I'm hearing? I couldn't find the page, it might.
It's on page six.
No, mine is different than yours.
I'm sorry, it's, it's under Public Safety Services, it's next to the last bill, so go to the Public Safety Services Committee.
I have it, and I have 1218.
It's Bill 1443. And if you, if you hand me your agenda, I'll find it for you.
Got it.
All right. Any other conversation about 1443? Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I wanted to know, does this have anything to do with what's supposed to be happening tomorrow, and what's been on the television about the city?
No, it does not.
Okay.
It does not.
Because I would really like to know, I think every council member should know what's going on downtown, before it happens, there.
It's a police matter, that has, police matter, that has nothing to do with this bill.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion to approve on the table, all those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, abstention.
Abstain.
One abstention. Thank you very much, positive recommendation. Next bill, under that same committee, Bill 1444.
Bill 1444, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Peacekeeper Products International in the Amount of $29,310.34 for the Purchase of Equipment for the Department of Public Safety Bureau of Police.
Need a motion, Mr. Lavelle.
Motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Lavelle.
Yes, this is, as I've discussed with members, this is be able to purchase a new public safety equipment for the police, more specifically, modernized billy clubs.
All right, any other conversation? See no conversation, all those in favor.
What is the equipment?
What's the equipment, Mr. Lavelle?
The equipment is billy clubs. As you all may know, the old version is sort of the very long, black billy club that police officers used to wear, which research actually shows helps incite violence when you're trying to deter it. The modern day will be a more, as a collapsible version that they can actually wear on their belt, and they can extend when needed.
Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you very much for your patience. Now, finally, last skipping around, then we'll start at the top and go down. Bill on page one, we're going to go right to new papers. We have a public-related, under new papers, it is 2019 1437, under my committee, if you read that, please.
Bill 1437, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Safety to Accept a Donation from Marquis Pouncy of $7,500 to Support the City of Pittsburgh's Bureau of Police Mounted Unit.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second, is there any other conversation? It's obvious, Mr. O'Connor.
Just, we were talking about this on a sidebar. Seeing the news this morning, I think Mr. Pouncy should also invest in a new wide receiver for our offense next year. It's just a sidebar, but yeah.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. Any other conversations? See no conversation, all those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, positive recommendation. Now, we'll go to the deferred paper, Bill 2019 1423, at the top of your agenda, and now we will go straight down.
Bill 1423, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Cliff Joe Consulting in an Amount Not to Exceed $7,500 for Services Rendered as an Expert Witness in a Police-Related Matter.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? Seen none, all in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, next bill, please.
Bill 1424, Resolution Providing for the Issuing of a Warrant in a Total Sum of $27,000 in Favor of Lori and Paul Heath, a final, as final settlement related to the action filed in the Common Pleas Court of Allegheny County.
Need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversation, all those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that takes us to new paper, 1438.
Bill 1438, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of William J. Miller Jr. Esquire in an Amount Not to Exceed $21,720.51 for Arbitration Services Rendered in Connection with the City of Pittsburgh and FOP Act 111 Interest Arbitration Award.
Read the next bill, please.
Bill 1439, Resolution Amending Resolution 738, Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter into a Professional Services Agreement with Campbell, Durant, Beatty, Palumbo, and Miller for Professional Legal Services and Expert Advice Regarding Labor Matters by Increasing the Total Cost from $70,000 to $220,000.
Need a motion to hold for executive session.
So moved.
Need a second, all those in favor, sentified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, next bill, please.
Bill 1440, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 863, by Making Various Adjustments to CDBG and Pago Fund Sources and Programming for URA and PLI Capital Projects.
Need a motion.
Motion to hold for executive session, wait, 1440. 1440, motion to approve.
Need a second, any conversation? Ms. Gross.
I don't see the amount in the title. Does anyone know the amount? They're moving funds?
Is there one here, if you please come forward, there's someone here for, there is someone here for, for that, probably in the text amount.
I do have my text file, but it'll take me a minute.
That's right, we'll bring the administration to the table.
Let's see, I wonder if any of the desktops are faster than my paper one.
I, I do have it, it's a, it's a whole series.
You would introduce yourself to the public and answer Ms. Gross's questions, please.
Yes, David Hutchinson, Assistant Director, Office of Management and Budget for Capital and Asset Management. It's actually a zero dollar total change, it's just changing kind of the flavor of the money. The URA is swapping some of their Pago funds to PLI, so that PLI can swap their CDBG funds to.
Oh, I remember this.
The URA. to the URA.
Tell me about the use of funds, I can't remember.
Correct. So with CDBG funds, the 2019 funds won't actually be available until much later in the year, usually in the fall. With PLI's work, we really need them to have the funds sooner, so they can react in real time to some of the things that are happening around the city.
So yeah, so the uses that PLI would be putting into, are they demolitions?
Primarily demolitions.
Yeah, I can't remember now. Thank you.
And CDBG areas.
Hi, Director. So identify yourself for record.
My name is Maura Kennedy, I'm the Director of the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections.
Great.
So the purpose of the funds would be the same, but CDBG has several limitations. We can't respond to fires, to demolitions, we can't take down large structures such as churches and schools. We also can't do projects of density, like around the community center where we'd like to do some demolitions there, and in some census tracts where we have blight but are not CDBG eligible. So there's a significant issue there with how flexible we can be with using the funds. We also can't respond to landslides and do any sort of geotechnical remediation or things like that. And then finally, we're not getting the money until November. So if we, you know, did not get that money until November, the limited amount of Pago funds that we have would have to be held such that we would only respond to true emergencies, and we could not do any other types of demolition activity throughout the year. So we're currently having about $150,000 burn rate in that responding to emergencies, and that would expend the totality of all of our Pago funds.
Wonderful. So the way I'm hearing it is that I know there have been some projects that have been waiting for a long time, and now we're ready to move to the better source of funds, it's not the CDBG funds, so you're just swapping them out.
Exactly.
Okay.
So it's budget neutral overall.
I'm very happy that you're now ready to move forward on the projects that so many communities have been waiting on.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
President Cross.
Hi, good morning, Director. Welcome, nice to have you here. My question was just answered by the councilwoman of what she asked, so I would only comment that, how much I appreciate your diligence in understanding the importance of demolition, reasonable demolition within each council district, and how varied they are, and how different our needs are in each of the different districts. But you've always been a pleasure to work with in that regard. You and I have had extensive conversations about the need for demo and how limited we are in terms of the expense of it, and all those kinds of things. So I just want to say that I appreciate your diligence in pursuing alternative ways of providing the services that are so desperately needed, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
Now, I had my question answered.
Thank you.
Mr. Calkiel.
Yes, Maura. What consists of emergency? I mean, what do you consider something falling down? Is it...
Things that are in true imminent danger, where they're collapsing onto the footway or a traffic lane, there's a fire that has significantly destabilized a structure, or other sort of large collapse such as that. Those are, those are sort of what we call curbside bits, where there already has been a significant event that's happened, where we need to take further immediate steps, where we literally hold an auction on the curb, and we invite all of our potential bidders that are approved demolition contractors to the property, and we do a curbside right there. So what I was talking about imminently dangerous structures a minute ago, those were the types of properties where I was referencing, where we can't wait even an extra day to take action. There's definitely other properties, and those are the ones that I'd like to be able to get to with this additional pot of money, that are imminently dangerous, that might collapse sometime in the future. We don't want to wait until that point, because it could cause significant risk. We'd like to act now, and those are the types of properties I'd like to get to.
So I have one I hope is on your list.
Yeah.
If not, I'd like to get on your list.
Sure.
And I spoke with the mayor about this.
Mm-hmm.
Excuse me.
No worries.
At least it's not a dog.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. So the property I'm referring to is 1601 Broadway Avenue. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I was in there a couple weeks ago, we're just trying to move these properties. It's been sitting there for, God, I don't know, 20 years, probably something like that. It's imminent. I mean, this place is like falling down, and not only that, it's the blight on Broadway Avenue and Beachview is a city property and the URA-owned property.
Right.
It's like, so they've been sitting there a long time, and I'm going to do my best to try to get this torn down. It really needs torn down. I took a walk through there with the assessor a couple weeks ago, and I don't know if he got back to you on the information on it, but you know, we're looking around, and I know a little bit about the insides of buildings and structure and things like that, but you know, his comment was, we really shouldn't even be in here. And I said, you know what, I agree with you. So this place is like, you know, right on Broadway Avenue, a T-stop is right there. It's, not only is it unsightly, but I think it's dangerous at this point. So was that on your list, or is that on your list?
I know that I've had several conversations with your office regarding this property, as well as, I know your office has been speaking with the URA and the mayor's office regarding this property, so I believe that there is movement from this, but...
Movement to me is a bulldozer.
Sure, I hear you on that. I think movement largely from the city, trying to think through, what is the overall goal for this property, and therefore, working backwards, what's the correct pot of money to then draw down the funds from?
Okay. So I had many conversations with many people, contractors and all of the above such possible buyers. This place is a big house, it's not a big building, you know what I mean? It's really not a...
No, I'm very familiar with the property.
Big project to take down, but nobody is willing to buy it. Nobody is willing, it just doesn't make economic sense. I mean, you can't, this place is just, I think if we can tear it down, then I can sell the property, you know, then the city could sell the property, and it's going to be, you know, somebody can see it as, I mean, the T-stop's right there, it's a corner spot, it's a beautiful spot.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, so we'll talk further about that then.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you very much. Cosmo Smith.
I just wanted to ask you real quickly. I noticed that, you know, our cost has increased, you know, substantially for demo in the city, but yet I've noticed, you know, I look at the borough minutes, you know, surrounding our area to see what they're doing, and I've noticed that theirs have not increased. And so I know that it was because of the asbestos removal and all those sorts of things that ours increased, but why would it not increase for the surrounding, for the county, for the entire county?
I can't speak to that, but I will be happy to say that our costs are back in line. So the reason why we didn't have a, the reason why, well, I guess I would hazard a guess at the answer, is because we had, per Act 47, a shared services agreement with the county, where we had to use the county's contracts for things, such as asbestos. So the county controlled the asbestos contract, but PLI was the sole user of it because of Act 47. But the contract terms were written in such a way that no one actually wanted to participate in it. So I couldn't get any bidders to actually give us an asbestos reading, so I had to take down all of our properties as hot, which made, you know, a single-family house demolition go from $7,000 a year to $75,000 a year. Now, we, that shared services agreement has expired, so we have our own asbestos contracting procedure now, and we've seen prices go back into line of what they were previously.
Okay, well, that's good to know.
Yeah.
So then we should be able to increase the amount of demo that people have been seeing.
Correct.
Because, I mean, those people that have been waiting, it's ridiculous, to be honest with you.
It was really unfortunate with this contract issue that really locked us in a way, and other counties, other municipalities around us didn't have to use this contract.
Okay.
So they were much more nimble in being able to respond to this issue.
So I had called for a post-agenda for PLI, and I have never scheduled, I haven't scheduled it because I wanted to give us time to work through it.
Sure.
And so I think maybe, like, to hear some of these things would be good, would be good, because I also have questions about the state Act 90 and where we are with that and why we're not incorporating that at all in the city, because I think that would help us a lot, and those are things I'd like to discuss.
Happy to.
So we'll work together and get that scheduled.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Harris.
Thank you for your work.
Yes, would this one go for, say, like Diana Street, or where Semisir, where the house collapsed?
Those are two examples of landslides where they're largely domi issues, so it's dealing with the right-of-way. So the expenditures for abatements around that are coming from the domi budget on both Diana Street and Semisir.
Okay. Okay, so some of my other ones will get knocked down.
Correct. It's a bit of a fine line between right-of-way issues and private property issues, so that would be how it would fall.
And we're still having a problem with water coming out. It looks like a fire hose, and there's two streets above it. If you go up Zang Way and go all the way to the end, it's the last house, but you can go down the Jackson Steps and cross over, it's right on the corner there. It pours out, and that's what's going over Gearing Street.
Mm-hmm.
So if you could have somebody check that out, because it's pouring out, and it is not a spring.
Sure.
Because I had the water tested twice, and it had fluoride in it. So I have those papers, too.
I know PUSA has been involved in that, and I'd be happy to connect you with their point person on that.
Right, but somebody's got to do something about the water pouring out of there, and so those people could, they're not our homes yet on Gearing Street.
Not, and unfortunately, you are responsible for the spring on your property.
Right, that's no spring.
Sure, I think that that's where I direct you to, PUSA. If there is a water line break, it would, of course, be their responsibility, so close that connection.
Yeah, if you go up and look, I mean, it comes out as much as a fire hose, and if you look, it's going over that hill to the Gearing Street houses, and somehow, whether it's you or domi, somebody's got to do something about that water because it wasn't there before. And there are two streets above, there's one empty school also up there, and I know they've been having some problems directly right up from there, so between all of you, if, I mean, even if you all have to go out there to look at it together, that water can't just keep pouring over that hillside like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other conversation? Seeing no, Mr. Lavelle.
Very briefly, 1647 Federal Street was a fire-damaged property that the community is really concerned about and needs taken down.
I'm not familiar with that one at all, Dan, but I'll follow up with your office.
You have the conversation. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposers, nay.
Thank you.
Positive recommendation. That takes us to the invoices. Invoices on the table, is a motion for an invoice.
Motion to approve.
You have a second.
Second.
Any invoices on the invoice, Ms. Harris?
Yes, Ms. Harris.
Is Bill or, behind me, yes.
Okay. He writes back. They have never replied to the URA's...
Yeah, we are paying again Allegheny County Police for the money, and we paid them last, last week, too.
Horses tend to eat and need bedding, so...
So it's costing $2,000 a week?
I would say this might be a month.
Okay.
But I'll double-check with...
We just paid one last week.
Yes, yes, we did. I'll check on the dates for you, but yeah, they're expensive.
Yeah, and maybe they could, you could print the dates down on here when it is, because the City of Pittsburgh's talking about using their police for what the hearing and everything here that's coming up, and I think that would be up to the county with their sheriff and their police.
The date this one, particular one, was for was January 7th, 2019, which leads to...
Okay, and what was last week's for?
I will have to get that information.
Thank you.
I do have.
But if you could just add the dates on here.
Sure.
Ross.
I just had a side, a brief sidebar with the Director about horses, especially over events like St. Patrick's Day and things, and there are cooperative efforts between city, state, and county police departments to bring horses in, and I suspect that's going to be more of a regular thing, and we'll probably expect to see more of these in the future, but it's a good partnership and it brings great benefit. I'm happy to support it.
Any other conversation on invoices? No conversation on invoices, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, this isn't nothing not to support this, only that there are things that happen, like the Great Race, court authority buses, we pay for, we pay for everything we use for the county, and then when it comes up to a court case or something like that, it seems like our police are there first, where the county police and sheriffs could be there, or they could pay us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other conversation? No conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. There are no entry, port, or transfer, there are P-cards, they are also on the table. I need a motion on the P-cards.
Motion to approve.
You have a second.
Second.
Any conversation about the P-cards? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. It takes us back to Public Safety Services Committee on page five of your agenda. Mr. Lavelle is the chair. We have a number of bills. Do you want them read one by one, or do you want all three of them on the table at the same time?
Put together.
All right, if you read the next three bills, which is Bill Number 2, 1218, 1219, and 1220.
1218, in ordinance amended and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6, conduct Article 1, regulated actions and rights by repealing the existing language of Chapter 607 Firearms, Ammunition, and Other Weapons in its entirety, and replacing it with a new Chapter 607 General Firearm Conduct to update existing laws to meet the public safety needs of residents. Bill Number 1219, in ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6, conduct Article 1, regulated actions and rights by adding Chapter 610, ban on specified firearm accessories, ammunition, and modifications, to place a prohibition on certain firearm accessories, ammunition, and modifications. Bill Number 1220, in ordinance amending and supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances at Title 6, conduct Article 1, regulated actions and rights by adding Chapter 603, extreme risk protection orders to provide for appropriate injunctive actions for the preservation of public safety in extreme circumstances.
Need a motion, Mr. Lavelle. Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
You have a second.
I'll defer to Mr. O'Connor and Ms. Strasburger.
To O'Connor.
Thank you very much. I want to thank council, I want to thank Councilwoman Strasburger's office, Hersch and her office, as well as Matt Singer in my office. What we are doing today, we are not changing anything on the text files. The clerk has a summary of the papers that are going to be added to the legislative The clerk has a summary of the papers that are going to be added to the legislative record, and that is what we are doing. The clerk's office is passing it out now. It's a summary for council. The legislative record, the, the research that we're adding will be available on Legisar for the general public to read, but nothing changes the text files.
I need a motion to attach the, the, what is this?
Supplemental papers?
Supplement.
This, I need to, a motion to attach the supplemental research to these three bills. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay.
Abstain.
Two abstentions.
We couldn't speak on that?
I did ask.
You can on the, okay, there are two different things. I thought you wanted to go through a regular bill. I'm sorry.
I'll wait.
If, because this is simply attaching it to it, but, and so we'll go back to conversation about the amendment, Ms. Harris.
Yes, I just would like to say that this is a law that the state has to deal with.
On the, that's on the bill, not on the amendment.
I don't care if it's on a bill or the amendment. The amendment, too, I can speak on to say that I will be abstaining.
But it's not, I'm sorry, it's not an amendment. It is a, it's simply attaching supplemental research. And so the, it's, to talk about the bill itself is really more appropriate to talk about the bill and its legality, not on the supplemental research. So I'd prefer to pass this through, and then certainly you'll have more than enough time to talk about the bill itself in a second, okay? So all those in favor of, of attaching supplemental research, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay, abstentions.
Abstain.
Two abstentions. Okay, now we're back on the regular bill. Mr. O'Connor has the chair.
I was going to, I was going to make a motion to hold the bill one week.
All right, before we do that then, Ms. Harris, as I promised, we'll have our opportunity to share. Ms. Harris.
Yes, I just want to say, on all three of the gun bills, no gun bills should be at this table because these are state laws. I would love to be able to vote on these, but they will be useless because they're state laws, they are not city laws, and the city cannot make any gun laws. It's very clearly written in the state law. And, you know, if you want to go up to Harrisburg, or whatever you want to do, to ask them to vote on gun laws, we can do it, just as this council voted on decriminalization of marijuana. And people thought there was only a $25 fine, and they ended up going to court, and it was much more, and it did go on their record, because again, this council does not have the right to make any laws on drugs. That's the state and federal government. So that's why I'll be abstaining because, and by the way, one of the state reps are putting, putting it in right now about the decriminalization of marijuana, because it couldn't be passed here at the council level. We have to, we have to vote on things that deal with the city of Pittsburgh that we have the right to vote on, and guns and drugs are not one of them. Thank you.
Very much. Any other conversations? Ms. Strasburger is one of the bill sponsor, then Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I wanted to just thank, again, thank the staff, my staff, and staff from Councilwoman O'Connor's office for, for pulling all of this supplemental research together. A couple other things to add to that. Madam Clerk will have two paper copies of the study documents in her office. It's voluminous, which is why we only copy, printed out the summaries for members today, not the full studies. But the full studies, which total 2,200 pages, will be available on Legisar after the meeting, and copies at the clerk's office as well. And I just want to say I look forward to working with all members as we work with you on amendments and response to these, these, this research that we've, that we've received and compiled and read through, and work with all members, because I think that there is a way to, although it's very nuanced and it's very legal, I think there is a way to pass legislation that is allowed, is allowable in the city of Pittsburgh, that we are actually, you know, given the authority to do. So over the next, I don't know, I want to, don't want to put a timeline on it, but into the future, looking forward to working with all members and talking with you about the possibilities of all three of these bills.
Very much. Ms. Smith.
So I'm just going to say that I'm going to abstain today. I talked to Councilwoman O'Connor, and while I appreciate the, the need for, for gun control, especially in terms of the registration and, and, you know, universal background checks and all those things, I, I have, from day one, thought that this, you know, some of this was, you know, the intentions were good, and, and there was also a, a part of me that thought it was politically driven. And when I saw today the speakers come in, one after another, to talk about how horrific gun violence is, I think there's, no one disagrees with that, and no one disagrees that we should have some, you know, some changes in the gun laws. But I think that the question is not whether gun violence is horrible, the question is, do we have the authority to do this? And that's what should be reported, but of course, because we made sure that certain speakers came in today and made sure that we said today we wouldn't be voting, so no one else came in to speak in opposition, we kind of controlled the message here today, and I think that the message really should be, do we have the authority? And, and really, how effective is this, or is this just another political stunt? Because it's starting to feel that way when I saw what happened here today. Of course, people are going to say gun violence is horrible, and people, mass murders are horrible. I mean, who wouldn't say that? Who wouldn't say that, you know, you know, mass shootings are terrible, unless you're doing, someone, someone doing it? That's not, that was never the question for me. The question for me is, one, do we have the authority? Two, the impact in the African-American community? We're banning the guns that most African-American folks are arrested for, we're not banning the guns that they're shot with. The same with the Latino community. And so those are the questions I have. It's not whether or not it's horrific. Of course, it's horrific. So for me, I'll abstain today, and I have some questions, but now these just, actually today just actually raised my level of concern. Thank you.
I'll simply say one statement, and anybody else, before I say my final statement, then I'll ask for the motion to hold.
I say something.
I will, I will, we'll have this debate when the bills hit the table, so I won't go over that at all. I simply want to say that it is my opinion, and hopefully unanimously, agreement on council, that our goal as a body is to reduce gun violence, whether it be homicide, suicide, domestic violence, or mass shootings. And we may disagree on how to do it, but I think we are united as a body and as a city that that is our goal. And so we will debate those methods, and at the end of the day, work together to achieve the same shared goal. With that, we ask that, Mr. O'Connor, if you'd make your motion to hold.
Motion to hold one week.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay.
Abstain.
Two abstentions, still held for one week. I believe that exhausts the Public Safety Services Committee. It takes us back to the Public Works Committee on page six, where Ms. Kale Smith is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1446, Resolution Amending and Supplementing Resolution Number 728, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Execute Relevant Agreements to Receive Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Green Light Go Grant for the Central Business District Signal Improvement in Further Providing for an Agreement Expenditures Not to Exceed $3,560,565 for This State's Purpose in Order to Authorize Expenditure of a Local Match Not to Exceed $890,142 Necessary to Obtain Grant Funding.
Need a motion, Ms. Smith.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Conversation? See no conversation? Ms. Harris.
Ms. Harris.
Is anyone here from Public Works to address this issue? If not, we will leave it on the table if you would.
I think it's Domi.
Yeah.
The director's here.
I'm sorry, I didn't see you. How you doing? My favorite director, as I always call her. Please come forward.
He says that to everybody.
I told you my kids, I have four kids, I told you my kids, you're my favorite kid. Ms. Smith, back to you, or Ms. Harris.
I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I was just wondering, we were supposed to do the LEDs around the city, are we going to be utilizing this money, and when will that start?
So these are, this is for traffic signals, not the streetlights, the LED.
When's that?
It was for the street.
Okay.
Streetlights, different than traffic signals.
Okay, so are we going to wait, or, until the check comes in for this, are we going to utilize other money and then just put this in?
No, so what this grant does is to ensure that there are pedestrian signal heads at all of our intersections throughout the downtown, so a number of our intersections don't have the, the pet heads, as we call them. So this would allow us to complete installation on all of the signals throughout the downtown so that we would have those.
Okay, and the LEDs, why is that being held up?
The LED streets, for the street illumination. So that's a different project that's still going, yeah, it's still going through the contracting process and the audit process for that.
Thank you.
So it's still proceeding.
Any other conversation?
Oh, yeah.
See no conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers nay. I believe that exhausts the Public Works Committee. Now it takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee, of which Ms. Gross is the chair. We start off with a deferred paper.
Bill 1212, Resolution Providing for the Designation as a Historic Structure under Title Two of the Code of Ordinances that Certain Structure Known as the Abrams House Located at 118A Woodland Road in the 14th Ward of the city.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gross.
So I, I just, I'm going to abstain on this, so I appreciate the public comment, and I revisited some of the materials on this. And you know, I, I'm always at heart a preservationist, and so this is a really difficult one, and I understand the nuances on each side of the issue, so I'm going to have to chew on this one a little more myself. I, I concur that we can't always say, oh, there's damage, because I live in a 100-year-old house, God knows there's damage in my house as well, right? We all have, we have old infrastructure, but that's the point. These are assets. And I just want to always throw in one point, that just because a house is, I mean, this is a postmodern house. I remember before postmodernism, you know, right? I, I'm older than postmodern architecture. And so, but as a sociologist, we're always reminded that the people who in what we call an age period cohort chart, is a great way to project into the future kind of what each age group is going to value. Most of us think that, you know, architecture that existed 20 or 30 years, was built 20 or 30 years before we ourselves were born, is legitimately old. Well, guess what? This house is 20 or 30 years older than most of our adults are now, right? So, you know, millennials who were born in the 1990s, this is an older home, right? So I see the significance on both sides, and I just like to keep that in mind. When I first moved back to Pittsburgh, the city was considering tearing down what I thought was a beautiful mid-century bus station. It had what seemed like acres of glass turquoise tile inside, but nobody appreciated it. But at my age, when I was in my early 30s, I thought it was amazing. And now we all kind of come to value mid-century furniture and housing, it's something that everyone's excited about, and we long, we had long lost our Greyhound bus station. So I just, I just want to give this comment, so I'll abstain today, and that's all I'll say on this bill so far.
I'll defer to Councilwoman Strasburger, if I may, and then I'll make comment.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is a, a house that is in a district that I represent, and I, too, have been torn over this. There are arguments to be made on both sides of this issue, whether or not to preserve it as historic. But what I come, what I come down to on this, on this issue, on this house, is the history since, not of the house itself, but since the previous owners and caretakers passed away to today. And yes, the previous caretakers invited people in to tour the house, and were enthusiastic about it, and the neighbors essentially accepted that that was a situation that they needed to put up with, and were okay with that. But since then, the, the house has fallen into disrepair. And I've actually taken a tour of the house, there's black mold that I've seen between the walls. It sits at the bottom of a hill in an area that floods, and whether, you know, there's the risk for water damage, persistent water damage, if it's not taken care of. And after the previous owner's daughters chose to sell the house, there has been no one, in 2018, July 2018, there's been no one who's actually come forward to put up the money to restore the house in any way. There has been a historic nomination by the Pittsburgh History and Landmarks Foundation and Mr. Cortland, but, but there's been no evidence of anyone coming forward with, with the money to actually restore the house. So in addition to the issue of it being a private road, yes, with an easement to be able to, for people to be able to travel along the private road to access Chatham University, even aside from that fact, it is a house that needs significant finance, an infusion of significant, significant financial resources to restore it to any kind of livable condition. And although there, there's a historic nomination, regardless of whether we vote to nominate it as historic today, or to, you know, preserve it as historic, I don't see any evidence of, of really anyone restoring it to its former glory. So that's, that's mainly what I'm thinking about. I understand that forever is a long time. I ever, understand that this is a, you know, renowned architect who built this house. But it seems like our choices are, we vote to name it as historic, and unless miraculously someone comes forward to want to spend the money and, and the, and the resources and the time to be able to restore it to its former glory, like the house in front is currently being restored, and wants to purchase it from the current owner, it's going to fall down eventually. It's going to fall down. And then the other option is, we, we vote not to, we vote against the historic nomination, and it's, it's taken down. So I don't see the difference really, except in just kind of the, the temporal difference between those two. Either way, it, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see anyone stepping forward to save the house, unfortunately. So that is why I, you know, I'm going to be voting no, and against historic nomination of this house.
Gross.
Okay, thank you very much. So in all the years that I've served on the council, I've only voted against one historic nomination, that was the Civic Arena. That was, I think, the most difficult vote I ever took because of the significance of that building, but understanding the history of the building and what it contributed to unsettling a, you know, entire neighborhoods of people, and, and, and the ultimate harm that it did, I voted to take that building down, and I still wrestle with that. I'm known as a preservationist, I appreciate our history, like Councilwoman Gross, I live in a house that was built in, we believe, about 1867, and I believe in respecting the past and preserving when we should. So I, I met with the applicant, I met with the attorney, I chaired the public hearing, I had extensive conversations with Councilwoman Strasburger, and like many of us in the council, wrestled with what my ultimate decision would be. But on this one, I, I feel comfortable that I've done my homework, and that I have weighed all options, and contrary to what my record normally is in terms of always supporting preservation, I, too, will be joining Councilwoman Strasburger in not supporting the historic designation of the Abrams House.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I couldn't support it even before I heard Councilwoman Strasburger tell me that there was no plan, no money, nobody to step up and actually do something with this property. But I couldn't support it for the simple fact, when government gets in the business of designating a historic value or historic property, on private property, it's just, just not right, I don't believe. On top of that, I just want to share with you a conversation I had with a woman yesterday. A friend of mine owns a beautiful five acres, beautiful part of the city, has a view of downtown Pittsburgh, and it happens about up against one of our greenways, which is gorgeous, right? And she asked me if I knew the owner. I know the owner very well, he's a very good friend of mine, and I talked to him about that property many times. She said, I hope he doesn't sell that to some developer, he, she said, because we'll be picketing up, up there, and we'll be giving him a hard time. And I said, well, why in the world would you do that? I mean, this is his own private property. He needs to sell it so he can afford to move into a condo, or whatever he wants to move into. And I just see it as a layer of government getting involved in, you know, somebody's private property, and I just, you know, just can't support that. So I'll be voting no as well.
Very much. Ms. Harris.
Yes, I'm very much for historic. If we wouldn't have started saving on our side, there'd be nothing left to it right now. And I have to say I'm very sad, there were three buildings on the Garden Theater block, and URA had spent $700,000 to take down those houses. I had two developers that still wanted to see it, and if they could have got it for nothing, and $700,000, that would have been a real start. So there's money out there to help people work on properties, to bring them back to what they are. And I don't want to be the one to say no. I mean, it sits, what I was hearing is it sits on a pond, and it's sort of like a 70s mood, but it was from the 80s. So I, I have to vote for it. I, I believe in historic preservation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith.
So just real quickly, I just, this reminds me of the Old Stone Tavern in the West End, it was designated 10 years ago as a historic structure. 10 years, it's falling in disrepair, there's no money, you know, coming forward for it. There's been a lot of people that have been trying to work on it, nothing's ever happened with that property. And so I'd hate to see something, something that should be, you know, preserved for, for the history of the community and, and cherished, turned into a blight in the community like our Old Stone Tavern has for our area. So I, I certainly understand this, and, I mean, it's sad, because I do, I do love the preservation, I love, I love preserving as much as we can of, of our history, but at the same time, you have, I, I think Reverend Burgess, you had said it one, so many times before, that we need to change the process in which we determine historic. before, that we need to change the process in which we determine historic designation, and I absolutely agree with that, and I thi, I really think that with, it's beyond time is, I think the more we're getting to, um, properties identified as, as possible historic landmarks or structures, I think the more, uh, the need increases for us to do something quickly about the process. So, I will vote, and this is not my district, this is Councilwoman Strasburger's, and I know that she's, uh, very in tune to her district, so I'm going to vote, um, in support of the councilwoman and the community. Thank you.
Another conversation. I will say my, very shortly, though, I will not go into a long diatribe, I, um, basically, I believe that historic designation should occur only with the owner's support. If the owner does not support it, and we as a city believe that the property is of such value, then we should put our money on the table and pay the owner, since we're going to rob them of their property rights, we should be willing to offer the owner the fair market price of whatever the property is. I think that's fair. A, you know, if the owner says no, then normally it should be no, but if there is, if we do want to then nominate it above their concerns, then it seems to me the only thing that fairly, we should fairly do is give them an opportunity to sell it to the city, since we think it's of that value, of fair market value. Um, I, I saw, you know, I won't go bring up the past, but I saw two votes on council, two different properties. One that serviced African-Americans, and, um, the community didn't want that, uh, activity, uh, social service activity, poor people, homeless people, and so they designated it as a weapon. And I saw us not designate the Civic Arena, which probably is the single most iconic building in the city of Pittsburgh, which was absolutely historic, and we decided because of the wealth and the power of the sports teams, not to do it. So, I find this process to be inherently hypocritical and inherently unfair. And so, I have said that publicly and privately. I was stunned when I came on council and found out the council could hilariously just rob a person of their property rights. I'm afraid of that, it scares me half to death, you know? Um, I'm, I'm not against history, though. I love history. I live in a, in a, the ironic thing is, I live in a historic house. My house was built in eighteen something, right? I live in one of the, my house is one of the first five houses built in my neighborhood. You know, it was built by a developer who went out of business.
Is it nominated?
No, when are you going to nominate it? What have you been waiting?
You can nominate if you want. I can nominate if you want. Um, um, and it's, you know, it's, it's absolutely historic, it's in historic books, they, they took pictures of it. My house is absolutely historic. Um, I just don't think the process is fair, and I've said that from the beginning, I've been very consistent.
Is your house deemed historic?
It is not deemed historic.
Okay. The address, please.
Sixty-nine sixteen Thomas.
No, stop it, stop it.
I've been living there for twenty, twenty-three years, I think, so maybe twenty-four years, and where I live is public, and, you know, has always been. Um, there's a couple of signs in front, in case you can't figure out which house it is, right? Anyway, um, so there is a motion to approve on the table, probably we should do a roll call vote on this bill.
Mr. Cockhill.
No.
Ms. Gross.
Abstain.
Mrs. Harris.
Aye.
President Gross.
No.
Mr. Lavelle.
No.
Mr. O'Connor.
No.
Mrs. Gail Smith.
Nope.
Mrs. Strasburger.
No.
Reverend Burgess.
No.
We have one, a, seven noes, and one abstention.
All right, and also, just in retrospect, I have to say hello to my friend, Mr. Cortland, although I did not agree with you on this issue, it's really good to see you, and we really value your prior service to our city. Thank you very much, and I'll talk.
You can't do that. Help us with the Old Stone Tavern.
For you new, for you, some of you new council people may not know that Mr. Cortland was the general counsel of the URA when I first came to council, and, um, um, brilliant, brilliant mind in terms of real estate. Um, that takes us to line use and economic development committee, where Ms. Gross is chair.
Bill thirteen fifty-two, resolution, amending resolution number five seventy-four, providing for the implementation of a residential sticker parking program in the Squirrel Hill neighborhood pursuant to Pittsburgh Code, Chapter five forty-nine, so as to amend the streets and remove addresses included in Area K.
Ready?
I need a, um, need a motion.
Motion to approve at discussion.
Need a second.
Second.
Any conversation?
Yeah, I'm going to turn, refer to Councilwoman Strasburger.
Strasburger?
Um, I am fine with moving this forward.
Okay.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay.
Bill thirteen fifty-three, ordinance amended and supplemented the Pittsburgh Code by creating Title thirteen entitled Storm Water Management, and by deleting Storm Water Management text from Title ten, Building, Chapter one zero zero three.
The motion.
Motion to approve at discussion.
Need a second.
This is the bill that we, um, voted through before, but then we brought back for a public
hearing, which I attended, and everyone was supportive, so this is, this is the second time around.
Any conversation? None. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Next bill, please.
Bill fourteen forty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement with Urban Design Ventures LLC for services relating to the administration of the city's Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, and Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS, programmed for a sum not to exceed one hundred ninety-one thousand dollars over three years, and for the payment of cost thereof.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any conversation? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. You can read the next nine bills. That takes us to, yeah, the next, still Mrs. Gross's committee, if you read the next nine bills together.
Bill fourteen forty-seven, resolution, amending resolution number fifty-seven, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from East Side Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, eleven thousand dollars. Bill number fourteen forty-eight, resolution, amending resolution number fifty-six, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from East Side Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, eleven thousand dollars. Bill number fourteen forty-nine, resolution, amending resolution six ninety-eight, so as to reprogram funds within City Council's office from East Side Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, eighty-five hundred dollars. Bill number fourteen fifty, resolution, amending resolution number five ninety-seven, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from East Side Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield Garfield Corporation, eighty-five hundred dollars. Bill number fourteen fifty-one, resolution, amending number fifty-eight, so as to reprogram funds within the City Council office from East Side Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield Garfield Corporation and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services, three thousand dollars. Bill number fourteen fifty-two, resolution, amending resolution number fifty-nine, so as to reprogram funds within City Council from East Side Neighborhood Employment Center to Bloomfield Garfield Corporation and Beachview Manor to Beachview Manor Housing Management Services, three thousand dollars. Bill number fourteen fifty-five, resolution, amending resolution number fifty-two, so as to correct a job number within City Council for Mount Washington Community Development Corporation. Bill number fourteen fifty-six, resolution, amending resolution number fifty-three, so as to correct a job number within City Council for Mount Washington Community Development Corporation. Bill number fourteen fifty-seven, resolution, amending resolution sixty, so as to issue a name change within City Council budget, Stop the Violence Pittsburgh to Poise Foundation, Stop the Violence Pittsburgh, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank to Saint Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank, five thousand dollars. Bill number fourteen fifty-eight, resolution, amending resolution number sixty-one, so as to perform a name change within City Council from Stop the Violence Pittsburgh to Poise Foundation, Stop the Violence Pittsburgh, and Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank to Saint Mary of the Mount Church, Washington Heights Ecumenical Food Bank, five thousand dollars.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Seeing no, conversation, Ms. Harris.
Yeah, what does that mean, reprogram funds within City Council office? Is that office funds, or is that just?
It's my allocation.
I think it's our own money, I think it's our own.
It's my allocation. They had to change the number on it.
Okay, so that, it didn't say what district it was from.
Which one, which bill?
Quite a few of them.
Like fourteen fifty-seven?
No, they, they were my bills, that, there was a, a job, a number needed changed on it, and there was my allocations for my office.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay. Brings us, I believe, to the last bill, last committee of the day, Urban Recreation Committee, Ms., Mr. Cockhill is the chair, new paper.
Bill fourteen forty-one, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement for the support of the city of Pittsburgh's city sports, baseball, and softball teams.
Need a motion, Mr. Cockhill.
Motion to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Mr. Cockhill.
I'll defer to, uh, now, Councilwoman Harrison.
Yeah.
If you would come forward, please, to the table, identify yourself for our viewing public, and then answer the questions as Mrs. Harris will lead you.
Hi, I'm Luanne Huran, I'm the operations and administration manager for Parks and Recreation.
Uh, good morning, Ross Chapman, Director, uh, Department of Parks and Recreation.
Okay, can you tell me about this?
Uh, this, the sponsor, so we've been working pretty closely with Pirate, uh, Pirates Charities, uh, the Boys and Girls Club, just to provide some support that kind of wasn't in place for, uh, baseball and softball. So, I had a chance to meet with, um, David James some months ago, he's an assistant commissioner for Major League Baseball. There's a big push to get youth motivated and activated into the sport. So, we were able to, um, solidify some sponsorship money, which will go into like a, an account grant trust fund. They're going to provide some in-kind donations, balls, bats, those kinds of things for the team, teams, they're expanding their RBI program to be more inclusive for youth, so they're not just targeting certain neighborhoods, but all area neighborhoods, and it's just a way to grow the sport. So, this is kind of year one, uh, sort of, in hoping, in hopes that we can advance the partnership and the collaboration. There's also a couple grants that we're seeking through them for some field improvements that Department of Public Works would have an in-kind matching effort, we think they're going to come through, so that's what this is about.
Okay, is it for all baseball and softball teams that they can come forward? And I'm, I'm figuring this is for children, correct?
Yeah, this is for youth baseball up to eighteen, it's for girls softball, it's for any of the participating teams in, that operate in the city sports leagues. What, I'm no expert, but I'm told that, um, baseball and, the interest in baseball and softball in the city is kind of, it's kind of waning a little bit. So, MLB, the Pirates, probably every ball club in the country is interested in providing some push. So, we're looking at how to have T-ball, maybe in gyms, or pop-up events on streets for kids and girls, they want more young girls to participate. So, last year, I want to say there were close to six hundred games that we manage at various fields throughout the season, probably about the same this year, hoping to grow that a little bit, but this is hopefully a step in that direction to expand the sport.
That's great. So, uh, this is extra, is there any extra money in your?
Yes, ma'am. So, what this will do, Councilwoman, this is great, um, this will help us pay for umpires. So, it's fifteen thousand dollars, isn't a lot, but it goes, it might represent maybe a third or so of the, of the money.
Is this less, not this, but did you get less or more money this year to help children?
We don't have, and there's no line item in our budget anymore, specific to, to city sports programming. There's, we don't have, everything is, everything that's general fund, community recreation, whether it be aquatics, or baseball, or whatever, it's one pot of money. If it's not a trust fund, it's all out of that same pot. So, for them, the Pirates and Chris Ganter and Patty, everybody at the Pirates has been wonderful working with us, for them to offer something for year one, and a step to build upon that, even for field maintenance with Director Gable's cooperation, that's huge for us. So, we're looking at this as a way to, maybe more next year, and more the following year.
Maybe the city can match it next year.
Yes, ma'am, correct, correct.
If you recall back when, um, Act forty-seven came on board, um, that was the program that went, was the, um, big league program, and we lost all the funding, and so we, as a department, found it still to be a valuable program, and so we tried to operate a small operation with just part-time staff to try and keep it going, so, but the funding went away.
I mean, this is a great way to keep children off the streets.
Sure.
And bring them up into a sport.
Yes, ma'am, and we have a, now that we have a program coordinator, specific to managing all of city sports, whether it's footsault, or vol, volleyball, or this, um, Steve is awesome, and he's got a great relationship with Boys and Girls Club, RBI program, the Pittsburgh Pirates, it's a nice, we have a nice forged partnership here, so everyone's really excited.
Bright knights involved, too.
Yes, ma'am, oh, yeah.
Just want to make sure.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith.
So, I actually have a lot to say about this, because I, as you know, I ran, um, Westwood Oakwood Athletic Association, my husband and I, for about twenty years, and we worked with all the athletic associations, um, across the city of Pittsburgh, and built really great relationships, and I know how hard the people work to put these sports on for our youth, and, and they've always, the Pirates have always been a partner, and they've always been really helpful in terms of the, um, baseball and softball.
From the north side.
But I do want to say, yes, Pirates from the north side, um, but they live in District Two, in Mount Washington.
And north side.
So, anyway, um, but for me, I've always had a concern that we are privatizing, you know, city parks, that we are slowly but surely whittling away at pieces and services that we are supposed to, and I don't want you to respond, you don't have to respond. Um, you can say some of it occurred under Act forty-seven, but some of it's been occurring every year, even now that we're out of Act forty-seven. I think we need to make sure that, that things that we are, that are a priority to us, um, are services that we want to provide to our residents, and, and this is one thing we talk about, a lot about, um, what we're doing for our youth in the city of Pittsburgh. Well, to me, uh, we should be making sure that this is funded and funded well, and there, there's a role for, for private dollars and, and partnerships, but I don't think that, um, we should be making sure that we're protecting city parks as a whole, and that it remains a public entity. Um, and, and as you hear and see all the partnerships that are occurring, you're starting to see it whittling, whittling away, and less and less money coming into it. But I will say that, um, you know, the parks and the fields are such a, a cost, I think it was like forty thousand dollars to renovate a field, and fortunately, DPW bought a piece of equipment, um, that they can do the regrading on their own, and so there are some good things happening there, but, um, and, but I, for me, it's a priority, and we're talking a lot about partnering with Pittsburgh Public Schools, where our dollars should stay here and providing the services we're supposed to provide, and then if we have extra money, then partner with, uh, Pittsburgh Public Schools and others, because they have a bigger budget than we do, they have a larger surplus than we do, and, um, you know, this is our, this is, we're, they're responsible for educating kids and keeping them, and, and doing things that, you know, beyond, um, education, we're responsible after hours, and we're responsible when they're in the streets and in the community, and on the weekends, and in the summers, and those are the things, and, and entertaining in, in some ways. So, I think it would be great for us to work, work on this, but I, I think council needs, we vote on these budgets, so, you know, when we're voting, if this is a priority, we need to make it a priority when we vote.
Thank you, Councilwoman, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Cockhill.
Yes, Director, uh, Luanne, thank you so much, you know, I, I'm proud to, you know, chair Urban Recreation Committee, and, um, you know, for me, when we talk about youth athletics, uh, whether it be softball or baseball, I mean, that's where I grew up, you know, and for me, I still say my most valuable lessons were being part of a team. And to say that's waned over the years, that's like an understatement, I got to tell you. My neighborhood, and we used to have, I swear to you, I would say a hundred and fifty kids march in the parade, now we're lucky if we have two teams. I don't know why, or, I'm, I know it's nothing, certainly on our part, or lack of funding for these organizations, but I'm so glad to hear that the Pirates are stepping up in this manner and providing a little bit of relief, and we can, because I know there are a lot of needs, you know, every field basically needs something, and, and they need help with the umpires and, and different things like that, so. I'm just curious, do they contact us, or did you go bird dog them, you know?
I think that the Pirates have provided some level of in-kind donation and sponsorship in the past, I think it just kind of maybe fell off the radar a little bit, so it was kind of a priority once we got into department realizing the impact that it has, youth, no, excuse me, youth sports programming has for youth, um, that, we just got in touch with the points of contact at the Pirates, so it's, it was a natural kind of fit to what is kind of core to our mission. Um, so, um, uh, they, they've been really helpful in kind of helping us help them, and it's all collaborative. We got the mayor, was at the Mayor's Cup last year, will again have the playoffs at PNC Park, that's a big deal.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I love, I love watching the games down at PNC Park, it's a real thrill for, for those kids as well, you know? And, um, you know, Darlene's hair, or Ms., uh, Harris's district may have the, the fields and everything, but the, but the best ballplayers come from the fourth district, they always have, really, you know?
That's why they come to the north side.
I've got so many trophies, I need a room for them, honestly, but, um, but no, you know, to me, I feel sports is a metaphor for life. What's that?
You could probably claim the hockey player.
Oh, he can.
Hockey place, we got, we got a lot going on in the athletic division, but.
I mean, what's his name that lives?
Can you hear me, Sarah?
We still have kids from you.
So, thanks for all the work you did.
Oh, thank you, Councilwoman, I appreciate it, thank you.
Gross.
Yes, I'm just supportive of both what Councilwoman Smith and Cockhill said, and I'm happy to support more investments in both our leagues and our fields especially, and I'll be asking for. And I'll be asking for my annual meeting with my coaches to talk about the field conditions. I know last year was a tough year, but there were a lot of repairs and improvements that we've been waiting for, for a long time. So just wanted to throw that out there, and that's all. Thank you.
Very much, Ms. Smith.